All right. Good evening and welcome to our August 15, 2023 Select Board Meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that, Mrs. Rain, I will turn it over to you to read our public announcements.
All right. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: The Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuann Property Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, and the Transfer Station Task Force. Volunteer applications may be found on the town's website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Hanson Day will be held on the Town Hall Green on September 16, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date for September 23. Local churches, businesses, and civic organizations will be in attendance with free demonstrations, games, crafts, and food. Come see all Hanson has to offer. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, August 29, 2023; Select Board, September 12, 2023; and the October Special Town Meeting will be October 2, 2023.
Okay. Thank you very much. First up on our agenda is appoint Cameron Carpenter as a Town of Hanson full-time police officer. Chief Mix, did you want to speak to us about that?
If you have to come to the table and talk.
Yes, you do.
This is where we do the interrogation. You're familiar with those, Chief Mix.
I don't like being a cameraman with those.
That's for sure.
Thank you. Real quick, we had a vacancy. We had an officer leave over a year ago. It went unfunded last year. We managed to get through the year without him. Now we had the opportunity to fill that position again. It's kind of tough hiring cops right now. There's not a lot of people that want to do it. We used to get 40 or 50 resumes with qualified people. We got, I think, 16 of the 16. I think 10 were actually met the qualifications we advertised for. Of the 10, we offered nine interviews. Three didn't show up, and we got down to six. I have to say, out of the six, three were excellent. And kind of a tough decision, but we came out with Cameron Carpenter. Cameron grew up in town. He's a Whitman-Hanson graduate. I was kind of giggling when I saw that he used to work at Camp Kewahney as an assistant caretaker because half the time people grew up in town seemed to have something to do with Camp Kewahney. He's unique in that he has not worked as a police officer yet. Merrimack College has a program where, I forget how many years ago, I think it was at least five years ago, they partnered with the MPTC, which is the Massachusetts Police Training Committee. The MPTC is who oversees all the training standards in Massachusetts, to include the police academies. They run all the academies. Merrimack College and MPTC made an agreement where they offered a program as part of your college degree. You would complete the police academy. So Cameron has his bachelor's in criminal justice from Merrimack College. On top of that, while going to a full-time police academy at Merrimack College, he got his master's degree. I mean, that's a lot of ambition for a young man to take on, for any person to take on. So that was very impressive. That impressed us quite a bit. He also has worked for the Town of Ducksbury as a beach ranger, so I'm probably sure he got used to people yelling at him about birds and not being able to get on the beach, so I think he can tolerate some stuff. He also worked for Barnstable as a natural resource officer. Not that we have any clamming beds, but who knows? Maybe he'll be able to do something with birds here. Either way, he has some experience. Also, what was kind of impressive to me, too, was his volunteer work. Throughout his college career, he was volunteering at the Lawrence Boys and Girls Club. He also has coached youth hockey for WHK, and he's coached the youth lacrosse here in town. So he's got everything we're looking for in education, in the requirements, and showing his care for the community and being a good citizen. With that, I would appreciate if somebody make a motion.
Did anybody have any questions for Chief Mix? Okay, then I will entertain a motion. Mr. Weeks.
Well, I would be happy to make that motion. I'd make a motion that Cameron Carpenter be appointed as a full-time police officer in the Town of Hanson contingent upon successfully passing a medical exam, psychological exam, firearms qualification, post-certification, and background check. His appointment being effective on August 28.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. George?
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much. We look forward to meeting him, and he sounds wonderful, and I'm glad that we've got a great new addition to the department.
Thanks. Yeah, I think he'll be a great addition. Once I get him settled, then we'll have him in for swearing in.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, that brings us to appoint Therese Jordan. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay. As Town of Hanson IT Assistant. Ms. Green.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board. So to give a little history, our IT Director, Steve Mulberg, came on board September 21, and he has been providing IT services for the entire, all town buildings and all employees by himself since then. With the increasing need for technology, the workload was increasing substantially. At May Town Meeting, they approved creating the position of an IT Assistant and approved the funding for it. We finally, we were able to advertise the position, brought in applicants, and interviewed the applicants. Therese stood out amongst her applicants with her credentials, and we're presenting her today to the board to make her really nervous. No, just to ask any questions, but she is really, she's got a great personality. All of the employees really seem to look forward to working with her, and I will turn it over to Steve and/or Therese.
Sure. Mr. Mulberg.
Yeah, so this is Therese. She's going to be a great asset for the town. She has a lot of skills, a lot of graphic design skills, helps with social media as well, was a part of her college's IT team as well. So she's going to be a very great asset for the town.
Great. And Ms. Jordan, did you want to say anything?
I'm just really excited to join the team because I did, like Steve said, I worked in my IT department in college for three years, which I really enjoyed, but I got a graphic design degree, so I've been doing that. So I'm really excited to get back into IT and like be more hands-on and learn more and grow. Really excited.
Well, I think we could also use your graphic design skills and capacity here at Town Hall. If you've looked at our website, you know that. So we're work in progress, but we can use more hands for sure. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Jordan? Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Therese Jordan as a part-time information technology assistant, effective?
Tomorrow, August 16.
August 16.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome on board.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Yeah. Congrats to you both, Steve. Okay, and that brings us to appoint Jessica Sealy as Camp Kewahney Event Caretaker. Ms. Green.
So she is Camp Kewahney, Dory and Roger held interviews. They chose Jessica as the best fit for a new Camp Kewahney event caretaker. If she were to be appointed by the board today, she would also be able to start tomorrow, August 16. And from what I understand, she was appointed by the Camp Kewahney Commission.
So they've already met and taken a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jessica Sealy, effective August 16, 2023, as a caretaker at Camp Kewahney.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. We are clipping along this evening. And that brings us to appointing Pam Rossa as a member of the Open Space Committee for a one-year term. Are you Ms. Rossa? Oh, you are not. Okay, I'm sorry. I just extrapolated. We very seldom get visitors, so. Okay, Ms. Green, did you have anything you wanted to say to us about that?
She had placed an application. She is a resident of Hanson, and she is very interested. I know she's been working as a member of the schools, but I'm not really sure exactly what her title is at the schools. And she wants to get involved with the town and help us out in volunteer opportunities.
And have you met her and talked to her? Because that was one of the criteria that we had as a board.
So I have met her, and I actually have met her son, who was our first student to attend for Stellagi. So I met her in trying to arrange, get transportation for her son.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And so you recommend this appointment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did anybody have any other questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Pam Rossa as a member of the Open Space Committee for a one-year term, I guess, effective August 16, because we're on a roll. Everything's happening tomorrow.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. That brings us to appoint Leonard Sapola as a member of Parks and Fields. And in your packet, you've got an application where he says he has served on many years on both the Hanson and Whitman Soccer Boards coordinating with Parks and Fields and performing maintenance for Robinson Memorial Field. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green about Mr. Sapola?
I think it's the same thing, do we meet him?
Have you met him?
I have not met this gentleman, no.
I have not met him, but I do know that he is very active. I've seen him, but I've never actually engaged in a conversation, so I don't want to be misleading. Do we feel that we would like to have him come before us? I'm asking you.
Asking me?
Yeah.
Oh, it doesn't matter to me one way or another.
Okay.
I was just curious, do we want to be consistent with?
I mean, we should be consistent. Would it be possible for you to at least have a telephone conversation with him and just ask about availability and commitment to the position in terms of length of time? But clearly, you know, he's already shown a commitment to the programs in town, so we're not disparaging him. We just want to be consistent with our approach. So if you don't mind doing that, and then we could put it on our next agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be great. And then we have got appoint Arlene Diaz to the Transfer Station Task Force, but I'm not really sure if it's Arlene that's getting appointed. Do we know if the Board of Health has determined who would represent the Board of Health on the Transfer Station Task Force? Okay, we do not know.
No.
Okay.
They haven't approached us with that. They have met and discussed it.
Okay. So I think we, do you have any meetings set up for any time soon? Because I think that was part of the...
I'll tell after Labor Day.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, so Arlene kind of jumped in. I can't tell if she jumped in just as a concerned citizen and someone that kind of fell in the gap with Melissa leaving, or if she maybe misunderstood what we were talking about because she just happened to coincidentally be in the audience when we were talking about, hey, you should probably jump in, and maybe she took it like literally. Either way, she's been great. She's been outreach-ing. She's been super communicative and transparent. She wants to keep things moving.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to fall off, so luckily, we're not meeting until after Labor Day, but I definitely think we should follow the process.
Yeah, so can we reach out to the Board of Health and suggest that in the interest of keeping things chugging along on that committee, that we would like an official appointee from them, and that would require that they take a vote? So I'm kind of looking at you, Ms. McDowell.
Sorry?
Can you reach out to them and indicate that? Yes.
So the only issue I see is that the Board of Health right now is only a two-person board, of which she's part of, so they would only have one member voting. I don't know if...
She can vote for herself.
She can vote for herself?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, you can vote, yeah.
And if I may, also, Madam Chair, Arlene Diaz is also a member of the South Shore Recycling Co-op, so she's very knowledgeable on what's going on out there as far as our landfills closing and recycling and things like that. So she really would be a good asset to the task force.
It is a passion for her.
Yes.
But I think Melissa ended up doing it because that was sort of like her, originally it was like an initiative she had suggested that we do. So we definitely need to keep on track and finish, put a bow on that.
Right.
But in order to do so, we need a Board of Health member.
Okay.
So, okay, so if we could just reach out and urge them to appoint somebody. So we're going to pass over that, and then we've got in our packet a list of the election workers, and annually, we have to reappoint them because their appointments end in August. So I will entertain a motion to appoint the election workers that are in your packet, and I don't have the piece of paper that says when their term ends.
Term expires August 2023.
Thank you. All right, that's very vague. I thought it had a specific date. Okay. So I will entertain a motion to appoint the election workers in your packet for a term to begin August 2023 and expire August 2024.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. Vote to accept rescission and new terms of employment for Town Planner. So, seems like it was forever ago, but really wasn't. Towards the middle of July, we received a resignation from our Town Planner, Tony DeFrias. It was met with a great deal of disappointment because Mr. DeFrias is intimately involved in a number of projects in town. McQuann Reuse, Light Control, this is in addition to being our Town Planner, strategic planning, writing all kinds of grants. And I think universally, the board felt that to try to replace somebody of Mr. DeFrias' caliber and get some traction and actually start to be able to effectuate change would probably set us back a year or more, and we're not being dramatic when we're saying that. So we did what any good town would do and sought to determine what it would take for us to retain Mr. DeFrias and what was the source of his wanting to leave. There were some personal issues, which I'm not going to discuss here, and salary, of course, was one of them. And we had noted quite a while back, Ms. Green, that we knew that if we looked at, did a competitive analysis of salaries in surrounding towns, that he was conservatively being underpaid by anywhere from $7,000 to $10,000. And we had sort of made a mental note that at some point, we would need to address that, and then that some point kind of came to us before we had the chance to address it. So with that, we entered into an executive session, and we're announcing that we have entered into an agreement with Mr. DeFrias to retain his services. And Ms. Green, could you articulate what the terms of those?
Yes. So we, basically, we offered him a salary, a higher salary, and he actually didn't accept it. He accepted a lower salary. So he is right now, actually, we should give a little bit of background.
Well, to be clear, we offered him more than what we settled on, but we're not lowering his salary.
We're not lowering it. No, no, no.
Okay.
We are, yes, yes. So at the October 22 Special Town Meeting, there was a vote on the floor to amend the salary for the Town Planner up to $90,000, of which he was not making up to that maximum amount. So we came to an agreement of $95,000, of which $90,000 is within the bylaw. We do have a bylaw in the warrant for the October Special Town Meeting for the extra $5,000. And we did inflate it a little bit to allow for increases over the next two years.
Okay. And the $90,000 is effective on what date?
That would be retroactive to July 1.
Okay. And...
And then once the additional $5,000 is approved at Town Meeting in the bylaw, that amount there will be retroactive, so he'll get the difference from July 1.
Okay.
Also, we did offer some additional vacation time, five additional days vacation time, again, which we do have a bylaw that guides us in that. We do have an amendment in our warrant, our Special Town Meeting warrant, to allow the board some discretion to grant vacation time. And let me just say a little bit about what's going on out there in the municipal government world. We are not in an age any longer where employees are a dime a dozen. Municipal government is not somewhere that people are banging down the doors to work. We are basically advertising for positions. They were not getting the candidates, as Chief Mix noted earlier. They don't get the candidates. We literally have had towns, communities call our employees and try to persuade them to go to those towns for more money. That literally has happened in this town.
Oh, there's a lot of poaching going on.
We have been very fortunate that the employees have not left, and in this case, again, the community pursued our Town Planner. So we are in a time where it's really important for us to retain employees. Providing, granting some additional vacation time does not harm the town. People now are very focused on a work-life balance. Money is not everything to them, so that's important for us to have that flexibility to be able to retain these employees.
Now, Ms. Green, I think a couple of other factors that the board took into consideration, which is that Mr. DeFrias is doing far more than a standard garden variety Town Planner.
Yes, he is.
He has been writing a huge portion of our grants, which was not originally really, I think his original job description was sort of like administer grants, which contemplated somebody else was applying for them, and it's a significant amount of work to put together the packages for grants. He's been a huge, huge component of our Economic Development Committee, really getting us on track, you know, really helping us to start doing outreach to businesses. We just sent a letter out last week, and that's something that we've been trying to get traction on for three years. Also, he's had some insight into some of his thoughts or vision for what might happen at McQuann, and he's going to be critical component in those discussions, as will the citizens and, you know, other boards and committees, but Mr. DeFrias, you know, is definitely going to be playing a critical role in that. So I think it's important to note that he's doing more than what he was originally hired to do.
Yes, he is.
And in addition to that, even if he were just our Town Planner and only strictly doing Town Planning duties, we did a competitive analysis that showed that there were at least three surrounding towns currently looking for Town Planners and six, okay. And I don't know if you wanted to speak to what we were seeing with that.
So currently, there are six surrounding towns right now looking for a Town Planner. Their salary ranges are $108,000 down to $75,000. Rockland is at 90. Hanover is 75 to 90. Ducksbury is 78 to 108. And then we have our smaller community, Akushnet, which is at 75. And then Avon just came online. Right now, they're at 75.
And again, those are strictly Town Planners.
That's strictly Town Planner.
Correct. So one of the things that you had suggested to us was that we had had a line item for a grant writer slash procurement officer. We never filled that position.
Correct.
But we had, Town Meeting had voted to allocate money for that. And one of the things that I think kind of convinced the board that we could afford this was the discussion that we're not going to fill that position, and instead, we're going to officially shift those duties, although Tony has been doing them. We're going to officially shift those duties to Mr. DeFrias and also simultaneously update his job description to include all of the additional tasks that he's doing.
That's correct.
So that's a long-winded discussion, but it's pretty much where we ended up. I know that this was universally rejoiced at Town Hall, that we were retaining Mr. DeFrias to the person, not every employee at Town Hall was thrilled that the board was making this decision. It's the first time that I know of where the board has aggressively pursued retaining somebody, and I think that if we were a company, we would certainly do that, and we are, in a way, CEOs of the town, and that's what we did. So I think with that, we need to take an official, oh, I should mention to you, you might be asking, what's the Planning Board think about this? Because he does report to the Town, the Planning Board. Well, the Planning Board actually voted at their meeting last night to accept the rescission of Mr. DeFrias' resignation, and it was a 5-0-0 decision. I also should mention that Mr. Campbell was part of our executive session, the chair of planning, just to make sure that we had representation from planning, because we decide salary and compensation and all of that, but technically, under the Town Administrators Act, you have a role in appointing, but planning does too, so we just wanted to make sure we were being super inclusive and everybody was on the same sheet of music, and they were. So they also voted last night to accept the updated Town Planner position job description. Now, we will go over that as it properly should be reviewed in wage and personnel. And I have every reason to believe that the board will accept it. We might have a few little tweaks, but I don't think it will be anything crazy. And so we have a vote of confidence and support from our separately-elected Planning Board.
If I may, I just want to make a quick correction. The Ducksbury position is actually Planning Director.
Okay. All right. So we need a motion if we're going to sync this up with the discussion and vote that we took in executive session and the conversation subsequent that Ms. Green has had with Mr. DeFrias, to increase Mr. DeFrias' salary effective July 1 to $90,000, to increase his salary by an additional $5,000, retroactive to July 1, contingent upon the Town Meeting article passing, and to provide him with an additional five days of vacation time, again, contingent with the Town Meeting article passing.
I have a question. Where's the money coming from, the extra money that, I don't have a problem giving people money that they work, is that, I mean, ultimately, are our taxes going to go up?
No.
No, not at all?
No, because the money was already voted and appropriated at Town Meeting, up to $90,000 for his line.
So this won't affect anybody in the town's taxes?
No, not at all. Not at all.
You kind of answered this in the motion, but just to be clear, the Town Planner is aware that all of this stuff is contingent upon it all passing at Town Meeting?
Oh, yes.
He knows this very clear.
Yes, he does.
Okay. I knew the answer, just want to put it out there for people to know. Okay. So moved on the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? All right, great. And I'm thrilled. Okay. Board of Health vacancy, we really already discussed this. As you may recall, Mrs. Pennetti tendered her resignation to the Board of Health. We are looking for folks to apply to fill that vacancy. And if you are somebody who might have any kind of Board of Health background, whether it's mental health, physical health, you know, septic systems, all of the above, we would encourage you to dip your toes in the water, because this is a great opportunity. This position, although it typically is an elected position, because Mrs. Pennetti resigned before the end of her term and before the next town election is being held, we need to fill that vacancy. It's a three-member board. It's a critical board in town, and we have to fill that third position. It's a critical board in town, and we have to fill that third position before we would have the town election. We don't want to leave that position open. So this is a good chance to test it out, see if you like it. And if you don't, you don't have to run in next May. And if you do like it, then you can pull papers and run, and you'll be part of the team if you get elected. So you can fill out an application. It's on, the volunteer application is online under Town of Hanson Employment, which I always thought was a little weird, but that's where it is. And Ms. Green will queue it up along with Ms. McDowell. And when we have an applicant or more than one applicant, which would be ideal, then we will have a jointly posted meeting with the Board of Health where Mr. Perkins and Ms. Diaz will join the five of us, and we will jointly determine who that, who is going to fill that position for the interim period until the next election. So that's really all there is to say about that. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Does that, the person that we appoint for that one-year term until we can vote for a new person, that person is considered a full board member during that?
Yep, full voting rights, full rank serial, yeah, everything. Yep, yep. It's just as though they were elected. But the process is that, and that's why the process is that it's two elected, separately elected boards coming together and jointly making that decision on behalf of the citizens because there's no election. So that's what the regulations are. Okay. So that brings us to Water Department inventory. Oh, I'm sorry.
So there's a suggested motion here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Did you want to make that motion?
If it's, should we make the motion?
Yes.
To place it?
Yes.
So I move that the town clerk place on the May 18th, 2024 town election ballot, the one-year term for the Board of Health created by the resignation of Melissa Ann Pennetti.
So moved. Second. He made the motion, okay. All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Water Department inventory surplus, Ms. Green.
Yes, so the Water Department has submitted, do you know what the, the thing that they submitted? Okay. Oh, thank you. Yeah, you got it. They have a 2015 Ford F-350 utility truck that they would like to offer for surplus sale, but the board needs to deem that surplus prior to this. Has 97,400 miles on it, and I believe this was the truck that was replaced by the truck that they had just purchased through the appropriation at the Maytown meeting.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to declare the 2015 Ford F-350 utility truck serial number 1 FDR F3B68FEBO7149 as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right. That brings us to accept a donation to the Hanson Conservation Commission from Paolo Miranda in the amount of $1,500. I will entertain that motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you very much, Mr. Miranda. Accept donations to the council on aging from Miriam Savini in the amount of $100 and Luanne Fuller in the amount of $50. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And that brings us to October special town meeting. Ms. McDowell, could you please instruct us as to which of these documents we should be looking at?
The one I gave you tonight is probably the better one to use because that is the one that council has reviewed and has their comments.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So in the past, we have just kind of chugged along. Now, we do not have any of the recommendations from FinCon. And so typically, in deference to the fact that this is a partnership and they represent our financial arm of things, we typically will wait to vote to recommend an article until we have a recommendation or non-recommendation from the finance committee. So I think tonight, our responsibility is to place articles for the town meeting warrant. And I see that we have got the folks from Stringer, Gray, et cetera Lane. And so if you guys will, just because I don't want to make people wait.
It's Article Number 4.
All right, thank you. I thought we might take things a bit out of order if the board is okay with that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So if you will recall, we had the folks from Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane at a select board meeting a couple months ago. It all starts to blur after a while. And we had the explanation from town council that what had been filed as the article originally did not reference the right plan number, that there had been subsequent changes. And in order to correct that, we need to go to town meeting with this correction. So we committed to them that they didn't need to do a citizens petition, that we would take that on in an effort to try to move things along and make sure that the language that was in the warrant was legally permissible and was going to effectuate the change that we wanted. So in this article, you have, oh, great, hi, Mr. Amato. In this, in this warrant, you have got the proposed language drafted by our town council to correct that oversight. Did you have anything to you?
No, I just, I simply requested a copy of it so that we, at least with me involved. I've got no comments for it because I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I don't expect that, I just was interested in looking as to what was said.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I'm being responsive to what your needs are. Okay. So our, as I mentioned, our town council drafted an article to correct this little, we'll call it funkiness around, around it. Did anybody have any questions or concerns around Article 4? Okay.
I just think we've all voted to support it.
Yes, so I will entertain a motion to place Article 4.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right. So it's in the warrant and...
Am I allowed to talk to you when?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. In fact, this may be, we post, I don't know when we're posting this on our website.
No, I mean, this is, this is a little initial draft, so actually, we can...
Just know that it's...
We have something on the back.
Yeah, just know it's a draft, but it's...
Article 5 is on the back. There's not the controversial on there.
Yeah.
They've all just said.
All right. And then in the interest of supporting Mr. Amato, who is here, we're just going to, Mr. Amato, what article are you here for, sir?
We have probably three articles.
Okay. What, do you know what numbers those are, Ms. McDowell?
I have no idea.
It's 22 and 23.
Okay.
But there's another one.
22 and 23? I don't have them. Okay. And what was the...
Article 17 is the third.
Okay. All right. So, I'm sorry, I'm recovering from an upper respiratory situation, so if I start hacking, I apologize. It's not personal. Okay. So let's start with Article 17, I guess.
Which one is that now?
That's the $500,000 for the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust.
Okay. That article is an article that we redo like every few years. That's the trust we borrow from for septic system upgrades and repairs for people that can't get a conventional loan. That's the loan that the town provides to people that systems have failed. It's been a successful program for 20 years, probably even better than that. And it works out quite well. Helps out a lot of citizens in Hanson, just borrowed from a trust, and it's, like I said, every so many years, it has to be voted over again.
Now, are you guys familiar with that? That if folks don't have money, or even if they do, but if they want to apply, they can get funding from the town? And it's not an easy process.
The town, is it repaid?
It is repaid.
Something.
And to the extent it isn't, then the town has the right to put a lien on the property.
Right.
But it would be very successful, and the beauty of the program is that there may be times when somebody has to take care of a septic issue and they just simply don't have the money. But the downstream effect of that is that you could be having an issue with neighbors, polluting water. I mean, you know, so we don't want people who are otherwise intending to try to comply to not be able to comply simply because they don't have the funds at that moment. So as Mr. Amato indicated, it's been going on for years, and as far as I know, I think we've only had one, one issue with it in all the years that we've had it.
Yeah, that was correct. Excuse me, it was corrected.
Yep. Okay.
Another part of this, I'll explain to also the fact that you can't just borrow this money to sell a house, you know, it's very, what requires this is very stringent. It goes on the tax bill, so no one can just buy a house, put this in under this loan program, then sell the house. So like I say, it's a very successful program in the town of Hanson. It's gone on for many years, so.
Yeah, I mean, I really feel like we kind of have an obligation to do it, but it's up to the board, but, you know. So I will entertain a motion to place Article 17.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great. Let's move on to your other articles, Mr. Amato. So we've got Article 22. And this, this is, Mr. Kincher, did you want to chime in a little bit on this? Because I know you worked with Mr. Amato on some of these dollar amounts and...
Okay, the 22, which is, which article is that?
That's the vote from Free Cash to raise an appropriate $50,000 for disposal services. But I think you wanted to change that dollar amount, correct?
Yes.
It's the updated version.
Okay. So what, the new dollar amount is?
It will be for Article 22 and 23.
Okay, thank you. So the new article...
55.
Where do you have that? Oh, I don't, okay. So it's 55,000?
Yes.
Yes. So...
Oh.
It's 40,000 on this article.
Yeah.
It's a total of 55.
So basically, it was two separate articles, one for 40, one for 15, but we put it into one article, we merged it.
So we're getting rid of 23?
You're getting rid of 23.
Yeah, right. We're going to just create one. So basically, Gil and I met this morning, we projected out like what the salaries were going to be for the rest of the year. And originally, the request went for 50, but we knocked it down to 15,000, which is good. And then we found, you know, an old article of 55,000 that for compactors that hasn't been spent. So we thought, you know, it sounds like a net zero effect. If we took that 55,000 and transferred 15,000 to the salary budget and 40,000 to the expense budget.
Okay.
Then we should be set. So that's basically what it is, is like a transfer from that article to supplement those two budgets.
Okay. Now, my understanding is that the Board of Health hasn't officially voted to endorse this article.
It will be done at the October, at, yes, the August 29th meeting.
29th. When are we meeting the next time?
August 29th. Same night.
Oh, that's right. But you guys meet earlier in the day, right? Okay. All right. So what does the board think, we, just in a way of background, we did have a rather stringent rule about changing any articles after our deadline, and we all know why, and I'm not going to stand on my soapbox like I usually do about it. But that said, Mr. Amato had to make some changes. They're a little bit up against it with the Board of Health, as we just discussed. There's only two members, and, you know, they're being stretched just so far, and they can only do so much. So what does the board think about the following? Waiting to place this, you know, it's in the warrant, but we're not placing it and voting to place it, nor do we have to, because we've got time, we've got sufficient time, until we get the vote back from the Board of Health? Because I really don't feel comfortable with us taking a vote without knowing whether the Board of Health actually endorses it. I don't have any doubt that they will.
But you don't want them to change it?
I think we know, though.
We're not going to let them change it.
We know. It's not, it's not like they're throwing something new at us at the last...
No, they're not, exactly. We kind of, we know that they just, just by, it's just all a timing issue, really, is what it is. Like, you know, if they had met today, they would have already voted. I have no reason to think they would have voted no. But I just feel weird about us voting to place something that hasn't officially been voted on by the board itself that's supposed to be endorsing.
So can we place it on the 29th?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
This article is approved, this is a transfer station article, the board did vote this transfer station article.
Right, but you didn't vote these different amounts with the 15 and the 40 and the one article. It's all been changed.
Okay, that's the funding part of the article.
Yeah, so, so I just want to make sure that the full article, in the way that it's currently written, is endorsed by the Board of Health. So we'll keep it in the warrant, Mr. Amato. We're just not voting one way or the other. We're going to be neutral about whether we're placing it or not. I have no doubt we will place it once you guys meet and just have the official vote by the Board of Health. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
Especially like the fact that the money's been found and not, it's not extra.
Conversely, you could make a motion to place it contingent upon the Board of Health voting to endorse it.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Because I don't, this might be a silly question, but we're placing it, these are still going to be tweaked and moved between now and...
Potentially, yeah.
But yeah, so I mean, it's not like we're etching this in stone.
No.
So even, even if we place Article 22 as it's printed in the larger packet or the single pager, either one of these could inevitably become the other one as we approach October. So it doesn't really matter.
Well...
We're just placing it.
You don't want it to.
That has traditionally been the case, but we are somewhat holding the line a bit more than we ever have before.
Yeah, but I think the Board of Health did a great job of getting the stuff in. The essence is here, it's all here.
He did get it in time.
So the tweaking and the changes that you can't account for, I'm not going to nickel and dime people on their efforts.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to place Article 22 as presented here, however we want to word that.
Contingent?
Contingent upon the board voting affirmative on the 29th.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Great. And I think that's it, since Article 23 we got rid of, right?
Thank you.
Because you guys consolidated. All right, we thank you for coming, Mr. Amato, and have your people call our people and let us know how you make out, okay? All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before Eric leaves, if I may.
Yeah.
I just want to bring to the board's attention a situation that came to light today that has to do with transportation for a student.
Okay, is this the, we're in the middle of talking about the warrant.
No, yes, I just want to...
Can he stay, you know?
Oh, can you stay? Okay, all right. It has to do with the warrant, but if he can stay, then we're, we're good. Sorry.
All right. All right. Let's circle back to the beginning, shall we? So Article, Article 1, we don't have, well, we've got $827 to pay Laura Brown Esquire. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article 2, I, aren't we discussing this in wage and personnel? And don't you think we ought to?
I stand by the same thing.
All right, fine.
It gets tweaked as we go.
Yeah, all right, that's fine. So I will entertain a motion, that's the wage and personnel bylaw, Article 2-12 and the associated changes. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Great. Article 3, we don't have dollar amounts in this, but to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of blank to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting. And this is just like cleaning up little loose ends at the end of the year. Did anybody have any, okay. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, we already handled Article four. That brings us to Article five, which is, um, the capital improvement, um, projects, and of course, we don't have anything in there, but it's a placeholder, so I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Article six is accepting, uh, the state opioid settlement, um, money, um, and, um, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, awesome. We're clipping along, um, and then that brings us to, uh, body cams, uh, for the police department. I will entertain a motion to place that, Article seven.
Sued.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, Article eight, um, this is one that I love, actually, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaws, and this is a fire code enforcement fine schedule, um, that is going to increase the fines for non-compliance so that our first responders, um, are less in peril when they respond to these issues. Um, so I will entertain a motion to place Article eight.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor? Article nine, um, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty from free cash to overtime costs, um, in the fire department, and this is to cover, uh, training at the Massachusetts Fire Academy for new folks. Um, and, but, we had already voted it, but there was a clerical error, so we're tidying that up and, uh, from the FY twenty-twenty-three. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, to, 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 see if the town will vote to transfer three hundred and ninety-five thousand from the ambulance account to purchase an equipment and ambulance. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
All in favor?
Aye. I need another second.
Just a typo, it says, and, purchase and equipment and ambulance?
No, I think it said, I thought it said and equip and ambulance.
Oh, and equip, oh, you're right, okay.
Yep, so they need the, you know, the, the other stuff that goes on it.
Um, Ben's right that we didn't have a second.
And I thought, I thought you guys were doing like a one-two.
He did, but he made a moan, he didn't make a second.
I'm sorry.
Could you articulate what your moan meant? Could you say, I second that?
I second.
Okay, if, if that's what you mean, okay. All right, um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, um, all right, that brings us to Article eleven, um, and that is, uh, to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the ambulance account to pay for ambulance billing. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, to see if the town, this is Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer five hundred and thirty-six dollars from free cash, um, in blah, 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 uh, this is to replenish funds in place for emergency management, such as providing emergency shelter. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, will you in favor, Ms. Green?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I was reading the comments.
Uh, Article fourteen, um, now, Article fourteen, there seems to be some question on this.
Thirteen.
Oh, sorry, thirteen. Getting rambunctious in my old age. All right, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash or any available funding source to install generator adapters at the Hanson Fire and Police Stations and Water Department wellfield. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor? And are we gonna get a dollar amount on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Um, Article fourteen, the Hanson Community Preservation Committee, um, has got an article, and I think, um, Ms. Federoff, our town council, had expressed concerns that she did not believe that this was a permissible use of the funds. And just as, in the way of a little background, this particular article is, um, for fifty-five thousand dollars, um, from community preservation to repair exterior repairs to a Hanson Group home, um, which is not owned by the town, um, was not created with community preservation funds, um, and Ms. Federoff emailed and said, this was not created by, uh, by, uh, community preservation funds, and she did not think it was a permissible use of, of community preservation funds. However, um, the rep, the person who was the point person for this project came back and said that this had been, something similar had been done in Rockland and another town, and that she didn't think that our town council was correct. Obviously, at the end of the day, we're going to defer to town council and not what other towns do, because, just because another town thought it was right doesn't mean it's gonna be right for us. Um, so, uh, this is my long-winded way of saying, I don't think we ought to take any action until we actually hear definitively back from Ms. Federoff, and I, um, I guess you could argue we could place it, but I, I, with Ms. Federoff saying she questions the legality of it, I'm not even super comfortable placing it.
I agree.
And I think we can defer until the twenty-ninth. What do you guys think? You're talking off the ledge, Mr. Weeks.
Well, I, I don't care where we're at, it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, so we'll just pass by that. Um, all right, Article fifteen, um, to see if the town will vote, um, the Hanson general bylaws, uh, classification and compensation, vacation leave by striking the language below and, um, adding underscored language. Um, so this is allowing us to pretend, to allow people to carry over, uh, five more days than is currently allowed under the, uh, bylaw. Um, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the Hanson general bylaws, uh, vacation leave by striking certain language and allowing, um, up to fifteen days of vacation leave. And again, this is, um, harkens to the conversation about Mr. DeFrias and the need for the town to be able to be competitive in recruiting and retaining employees by having some flexibility around some of those work-life balance, um, things that really don't cost us money but may make the difference in retaining somebody. So I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
As we're burning through this?
Yes, we are burning through it.
We have comments, and this comment is interesting. Why are we blowing past that comment?
Uh, the select board, I, uh, Ms. Green, there is a comment by Ms. Federoff, um, and I'm not sure if you saw it, I think that what you submitted might not be what you had intended to submit, so if you could address that comment with Ms. Federoff, um...
Oh, okay.
Oh, they have to be for five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I see, I see.
Right, right, so, right, taking that out.
Yeah, um, so if you can straighten that out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, Article seventeen, uh, but thank you for mentioning that, Mrs. Green. Um, to see if the town, we already did Article seventeen, because we had Mr., um, that was the, the, uh...
Yes, yes.
Septic loan. Um, Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend general bylaw Article two dash nine, uh, authorizing revolving funds. Um, this is for conservation mitigation, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes.
Um, just supposed, just supposed to be, uh, an amount associated with this too, so, um, I think, in order to make it a bylaw, the town has to accept a bylaw in vote and authorize an amount.
Wait a minute, are you saying for Article?
Eighteen, eighteen, there should be an amount on there, so you can accept it, I don't know, the, maybe the town council can broaden the article to put an amount, there should be an authorized amount with it?
Um...
When you accept, uh, revolving funds.
What are your thoughts about this article, Mr. Kinserf, since you've said something about it, and, and I...
Oh, I, I, I think it's, I think it's, it's fine, because they're just taking things that they charge in, um, you know, applicants and they use it to expend, but keep people from coming down to my office and just saying, hey, I want this, you know, so, I, it's fine, it's just, uh, like a little...
So we need a cap of what the doll, the maximum dollar amount of it will be?
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so can we work on that, you guys? Okay. All right, where were we on that? Did we place, recommend? I don't know, keep me honest.
We, we recommended.
Okay.
I'm just impressed with Eric. I just love him. He's so sharp, he's so good. Always keeping everybody on their toes.
And he does it with a smile.
He really does.
And how many accountants do that?
Not a lot.
Um, okay, um, Article nineteen, um, that is a property assessor's map sixty-seven, lot fifteen and fifteen A, uh, care and custody of conservation. Um, this is a northern side of West Washington Street bracket of, and I am not even going to attempt the name of this river.
Shuma, Shuma.
The S-H River, um, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Um, and that brings us to Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to place the properties identified in an assessor's map eighty-eight, lots seven and eight into the care and custody of Conservation Commission. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that brings us to Article twenty-one, um, which is thirty thousand dollars to replenish the conservation fund. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, twenty-two, uh, we already took care of, twenty-three has gone by the wayside, uh, twenty-four, um, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Camp Quaney retained earnings the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be added to the line item, uh, Cove staff wages in Camp Quaney FY twenty-twenty-four operating budget. When the budget was established, it was not known that Cranberry Cove would be opening, open for swimming, swim lessons and kayak rentals. The amount of fifty thousand is the cost to pay for the Cove staff, beach directors, lifeguards, gatekeepers for the season. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're now rounding the corner to Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or available funds in the sum of ten thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing the brick portions of the walkway at the Library Senior Center. Um, they've, they've got a little tripped hazard situation going outside the library and senior center, I don't think I need to tell you that that's, uh, that's a liability. Um, so they'd like to replace that with alternative material. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, that brings us to Article twenty-six, um, to see if the town will vote to transfer from ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, the sum of money for a full infield mixed conversion on all baseball and softball fields in the Town of Hanson. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer nineteen thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars from American Rescue Plan, AKA ARPA, funds for the purchase and installation of three seven-tier rotary filing cabinet cabinets, two shelving units with a hundred and twenty-five shelf guides in the select board and town administrator's office. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer fourteen thousand dollars from the formula grant to wages to fund an existing program assistant position at the Council on Aging.
There is council.
Oh.
Okay, they, yeah, that, that is not needed because it's coming out of a formula grant, and I, I talked with the Council on Aging director, she said, you know, thank you, so that doesn't need to be placed.
So she was just trying to be cautious and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
You expect that with...
All right, so we can delete that one, okay. All right, well, then we don't need a motion. Um, okay, so that brings us to Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash the sum of money in the amount of seventy-six thousand for stormwater management. Now, when we're, I thought we had to say what, like, we can't say vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash, don't we have to pick a lane?
We, we, uh, for, yeah, for May, we need, I mean, for October, we need to choose a funding source.
I, I think, I think the article can be broad, but then when they make the motion, it has to specify.
Mm-hmm.
So what I've seen in other towns is sometimes they'll put it here, reserve, so that it'll give the town the options, but at town meeting, the motion has to pick, you have to pick one.
All right, I guess if Kate didn't make a comment about it, then I'm gonna presume that it was right, but Beth will want to know in the motion that she writes up for whoever, for Jameson or whoever.
Right, right, yeah. So there's still some, some updates and tweaks.
All right, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Article thirty, um, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash ten thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of a forty-eight inch, twenty-two horsepower, commercial scag zero turn mower. Um, I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer for free cash in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand to provide funding for the roadway surface crack sailing of Route fifty-eight from the Halifax Town Line to the Whitman Town Line. I will entertain a motion to place.
Sued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Article thirty-two, now, Ms. Green, could you give us a little background on this, because I noticed Article thirty-two, I believe, um, is written by us, and then Article thirty-three is a citizen's petition.
That's correct. So this article is being placed, um, as, basically back in two thousand and six, I believe it was, um, the town voted to accept Litchfield Lane and Proudfield Way as a public way, um, however, the next steps were not followed within the timeframe, so...
By the town?
By the town, yes, by the town. Um, it has taken all of these years to circle back around, um, and to come back to our attention on this, to put this back on the warrant, uh, for town meeting approval, so that we can continue, um, those steps. And basically what that in, in, um, includes is, uh, the one hundred and twenty days to move forward with the title, um, formalities that need to take place.
With the same thing we're doing on Alden.
Exactly, yes.[1499.66]
The same taking and all that.
So this article here, the citizen's petition was filed, in case Article 32 does not pass, the citizen's petition will kind of bring this up for reconsideration. If Article 32 passes, then the citizen's petition will be...can be withdrawn at town meeting.
I'm just concerned, I don't wanna run...just a moment, please. I don't wanna run into the same situation we did with Alden, where there's some...you know, like, if it's not written precisely...and I understand why people are doing this, because they've been waiting since 2006, but I...I wanna make sure there's not another pitfall for the unwary, where the wrong plan is referenced, the wrong plot is referenced, and then we're circling the drain and spending money and resources on this. So what you're telling me is the reason you placed them in the order that they did is that we've written Article 32 in the way that it should be written, to effectuate the change that we understand needs to be done and that should have been done originally?
Correct, yeah. Town Council did formulate this article.
And is Article 33 really the way that it's writ...that article's written?
Yes.
So...
That's the citizen's petition.
Citizen's petition is gonna go on the way it's worded.
Yes.
But it will not get them the change that they need, potentially.
Exactly.
Possibly, yes.
So I just...as we're going into this, just because town meeting's kind of wonky sometimes and there's technicalities, special town meeting, 100 signatures, you automatically get it on. Doesn't mean that the wording's actually gonna get you what you wanted, or what you thought you were going to get.
Correct.
So Article 32 is going to get the people that signed the petition what they actually wanted.
Correct.
So 33, just for people, the 116 people, if you want to effectuate the change, show up for town meeting and make sure you vote for 32.
I would say 33 absolutely isn't going to get them what they want, because it's saying to see if the town will vote to have a warrant. Well, you know what? Even if that passes...
The warrant doesn't make sense.
The warrant won't happen until May.
Well, you wouldn't have a warrant, you'd have an article.
Yeah, well, that...
The wording alone, this is the warrant. The article was...the article is the article, the warrant's the thing.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I agree, yes.
If I may, just quickly.
If you could tell us who you are and what your address is, please?
Sure, I'm Martha Bolger, 25 Proudfoot Way, in the Litchfield-Proudfoot area. Couple of things, we began sort of the process of getting signatures before that was drafted, so there was a little overlap.
Okay.
We spoke to Mr. De Frey, and he was of the opinion, and the planning board had since voted, so, again, the overlap existed, that ultimately, they supported Litchfield and Proudfoot being made public way. Our group had sort of always been under the impression that it was, because our builder had explained that it was, and our builder made $60,000 worth of improvements at the time to meet the Town of Hanson's requirements. This is literally...and I know that there were some issues that came up as far as title with respect to the stray lane and stringer, but ours had already been approved before and has been approved again. We were just trying to get the warrant to get on the article, to get on the ballot.
Understood, but the same steps that we have to take with Alden still have to be taken with your project, too. So even though you guys were light years ahead, many years before, what we failed to do was to do the takings and the...all the deed work...
Right, I understand.
And all that, so...
So can I just jump in for one second?
Yeah.
Just to be...just keep things super simple. For 33, if you guys...if the 116 people vote for Article 33, it's not gonna get you what you want.
Right, we understand that, and we were just trying to get it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Once 32 was sort of written...
Yeah.
We included and attached just a slightly amended version of what the town did.
Yeah.
And so ultimately, you know, we are in support of the article that the town put forward, but that was put forward sort of after we started our signatures going.
Right, but this can be revoked.
Yeah, so that's what I was about to say. So what I would suggest is, now that it's on here, you vote to pass over this or remove it, the citizen's petition.
It's...
Because 32, that way we don't have to...because we have to place this, because of the way the bylaws work. So we have to place 33.
This will have to be in the warrant, the citizen's petition.
It's going to be on there. So when the time comes...we'll remind you, just so you know, but when the time comes, the petition proposed by Michael Bolger, he'll have to stand up and say, "I want...I moved to pass this over."
Right, so that petition, once 32 is approved, we get up and withdraw.
As an alternative to clean this up, Michael Bolger, because he's the one listed, he must have been the first person who signed it, can revoke that warrant article.
Can anyone on the list?
No, it has to be him.
Has to be him.
And he has to go to the town clerk and say...
Even if...just to be clear, even if 32 fails...
That's probably the issue.
That's why I wanna be, like, super clear about this going forward, because it's very particular. Even if 32 fails, 33's not gonna get you what you want. You're gonna wanna take all of this and then apply it to 33 as a citizen's petition.
A separate new citizen's petition.
You're gonna have to...the citizen...33, doesn't matter whether you vote yes or no, this is not gonna get you what you want. It actually might screw up the process.
It will, it will.
It's gonna...if 32 passes and 33 passes, it's gonna screw up 32. If 32 doesn't pass and 33 passes, it's gonna screw up your potential to get it, you have to wait.
So can we merge our support for 32?
Just move to pass over 33 when the time comes. Make sure no one votes for it.
You're saying...
Okay.
You're saying that Michael Bolger has to be there to do it though?
To withdraw.
No, Michael doesn't have to be there to pass over.
Does anybody who signed it?
Anybody can pass over.
Just make sure that 33 gets passed over, and make sure that everybody that's on this petition that wants 32 to pass shows up that night to vote for 32. That's gonna get you what you want.
Personally, if you wanted the cleanest possible path forward, I would try to have Michael contact the town clerk and revoke that article. If not, we just can't predict...town meeting's so unpredictable, you never know what people are gonna...people could say, well, that...
What are you saying, the article that's written at the top, you're saying it just...it's not worded to say that you got the...you have the authority to do what is necessary? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Yep.
It's honestly...it's a meritless warrant article, it doesn't really say anything.
Well, we attached a copy of it.
Yeah, but it's...what's the...the article that people signed, which is the language that's in our warrant right now, is all that matters. That's the legal thing that people sign to put in the...you know, I know you'll have whatever, maybe you have, like, informational information, or like pamphlets or something, but what people are voting for is what you got the 116 signatures on, and that's what's in the warrant. That's what they're voting on, is just that language.
You're gonna find yourself the same as Alden Way, where if it gets passed, it's not gonna revoke any change, you're gonna have to put this language in. 33's gonna screw...it's well intentioned, but it is gonna screw it up if 33 passes. So 32 is what you need to focus on.
But, I mean, you can do whatever you...you know, whatever you guys want, but we've been down this path a couple times, so we're just trying to...
Trying to make sure you get what you want, is really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
So you haven't voted yet to place...
Well, we're about to do that, yeah.
We're about to.
And so you'll place them both, and then we'll have somebody withdraw on it.
We won't vote one way...usually, we don't vote one way or the other on the citizen's petitions, because they're required to be placed. So it's meaningless whether we vote on it or not.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion on 32?
Not on 32, but here's a little question that you've kind of just raised already. And I understand what happened with us, I understand it all now. And I was also told that it is not place to vet a citizen's petition.
It's not just not our place, we're not permitted to do that, yeah.
You have to place it.
Yeah.
The little glitch that happened on Alden, can that somehow be rectified within your bylaws or your...
No.
Whatever.
Nope.
It's above us.
That nobody reads that?
No, we had town council look at this and give us an opinion, and we're taking their...
Just to curiosity.
No, because what she was afraid on the Alden Way was that if you had one malcontent on the street that said, "Hell no, I'm not gonna go with it," that they could use that...the miswording of that against us. So, and then we'd be in a lawsuit, we all want to avoid that.
We all want to avoid that, sure. So I just ask that at this point, because it can be a little...
No, no, I get you.
So thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to place Article 32.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, great.
That was easy.
Article 32 or 33 is a citizen's petition, so no need to vote. We will...do you wanna entertain a motion to defer to town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to Article 34. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $29,572 to replace and install network switches at the Hanson Indian Head Elementary School and Hanson Middle School. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And we are on Article 35. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $158,928 to purchase and install touch view interactive panels at the Indian Head Elementary School and the Hanson Middle School, including any and all related costs. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, Article 36. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $62,626 and 10 cents to replace and install network switches at the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and last, certainly not least, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $71,000...what? Oh, $71,156 and 40 cents to purchase and install touch view interactive panels at the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so that...
Just for the sake of argument, for all of these, 37, 36, 35...
Have they all gone to...
None of them gone, as far as I know, to capital improvement, so...
When are you guys meeting?
They missed the deadlines anyways, so I was just kinda curious how that came about.
Well, if you will recall, they missed the original deadline. Did you guys never get any information? They missed the deadline for May, which was why we never...we didn't...
I talked to the chair, the minute after we had wrapped up our last select board meeting, when I think somebody had asked me to reach out, or I said I was gonna reach out. At that point, which was a couple of weeks before the deadline, the chair of the capital improvement said nobody had reached out for capital asks.
Can we circle back with the district?
So, yeah, so I know that Jeff has been in contact with Frank, and I thought that...
So did he go before the capital improvement?
I thought they were scheduled for the 20...are you meaning on the 21st of August?
I don't know.
We...
I'm aware of, but even if we were...
Do you guys meet on a Monday night?
We typically meet on a Monday.
Okay.
But we haven't had any meetings, because no one's put in saying that we had any asks.
Well, okay, so these were put in this warrant because we made that commitment to the district at the time after the last...because we missed the May town meeting warrant. It doesn't mean they don't still need to go to you guys.
Yeah, I agree, that's what I'm saying.
So we just need to make sure you meet and you guys vet this before our meeting on the 29th.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that Frank has an idea.
Exactly.
I'm just bringing it up for now, I'm not trying to make a big deal.
Frank and Jeff have been in communication as of yesterday regarding this, so, yes.
As of yesterday, right, usually that's usually answered.
Okay, alright, well...
We hope to do better in the future.
Okay, strategic planning update.
Actually, Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did you wanna talk to...have Mr. Ketcher?
Yes.
Okay.
So I need to put a placeholder for an article based on some...oh, I'm sorry. Can...we can vote to close the warrant, right? Even though we haven't...well, we had two articles moving in place, one moving in place.
Yeah, so we just keep it open?
Yeah.
I'm just curious procedure.
Sorry, we're having like the sidebar here. Okay, Mr. Ketcher?
So if I may, information was brought to my attention today regarding additional money that we are most likely going to have to expend on transportation for a student. If you recall, there was an issue with a student that we had to pay for transportation from one location to the school, and it was extra. Well, I was brought to my attention today that the situation continues, which means we are going to have to figure out transportation, and I have been speaking with our town accountant on where the money is going to come from. I need to ask for a placeholder in the warrant, so I can fashion a article that's gonna approve that extra money. I did make a call to Desi today, the problem...the situation line, and I spoke with somebody about what we can do regarding the situation, and I'm awaiting a call back from them. But I do wanna ask for a placeholder, because this is gonna cost the town about $54,000.
And have we checked with legal counsel on whether our agreement with whatever...I don't know if it's Norfolk Yanki or Bristol, whatever, whether our agreement with them includes busing? And did I not read that there was an article for out-of-district busing currently being contemplated by the legislative body? I thought that there was...did you see that, Eric? Yeah, okay.
I don't know if it would...if it will happen in time for...before the beginning of the school year, which I believe is in two weeks.
Mr. Ketcher?
One thing that I was thinking about as we're talking here, you have Article 3 already placed on the warrant, so when those numbers become known, part of the table of this Article 3 under like the type of cultural line item, they disappropriate here.
Well, we're not voting to close the warrant tonight, so we certainly can make an exception for our own office, adding an article that we could not have contemplated prior to our deadline. I think we can see our way clear of that, so...
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, so, you know, our next meeting is not the first time you're...
That's a lot of money.
It is, it is.
It's a lot of money.
So hoping we'll get some guidance.
Okay, okay, was there anything else, Mr. Ketcher? I am curious, I see a lot of money articles in this warrant, and I'm curious as to whether you think we actually have the money to pay for all of these.
I don't know right now, I'm in the process of, like, you know, closing the books and looking at everything, and a lot of, like, the generators, we don't know how much it costs, so I probably won't know until I get some of these numbers solidified, and I get a preliminary look at what our free cash is going to be. So the answer is, I don't know, I don't know till I get done reviewing the books for 23, get a good idea of getting certified free cash. Like, my plan is to submit it on September 15, but I think after September 5, within the next couple of weeks, I'll have an idea how much we could afford. Right now, I just did a quick math, it came up to like $650,000 in free cash, based upon what you guys talked about with numbers, so...
Yeah.
You know, so we'll just have to wait and see.
Yeah, it just struck me as a lot of money for an October town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't recall, and it may be that people are anticipating what May town meeting would be like and trying to front-run the numbers, I don't know, that's just my jaded little, you know, thought, but...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Might be a stupid question, but where does free cash get generated from? How do you...how does that money get...where does that money come from?
Okay, so basically, what free cash is, is...I'll give you an accounting answer, which will be like formal, it's like retained earnings debt, the DLS says you can spend, that's like the technical mix-up. But the way it gets generated is every year, the town makes a budget for revenues, and they make a budget for expenses. So sometimes the revenue's coming greater than what they anticipated, and the expenses coming lower than you guys anticipated, like, they don't spend every penny. So like, in a basic sense, that, the revenues accumulate and the expenses accumulate, that you don't spend...
So that's money carried over?
That's right, that's right, yeah. And then the other part is to get, like, too technical, sometimes if they collect old taxes, like tax-type of revenue, like if you sell a house or something, sometimes if one kind of sources that help boost up that number.
Free cash isn't really free. It's just unallocated.
Right.
Unspent.
Okay. I hear it talked about an awful lot, and I'm like...
No, it's a legitimate question. And if you're thinking it, somebody else is thinking it, so...okay, anything else, guys, on that? Okay, alright, then let's move on to strategic planning update. Ms. Green, anything material on that?
Actually, there hasn't been any material developments on strategic planning.
Alright, well then, shall we move on to goals for the town administrator? You did projects and goals completed in progress since 4/26/21.
And then on the second page, I added projects and goals as of 7/1 of 23.
Yeah, 'cause we've already seen the first page.
Yeah. So I don't know how people wanna handle this, you know, where there's a little list of some goals, which seem to be all mostly things that you're already working on, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Did anybody have anything else burning that they wanted to?
I don't know if it's related, but this...I talked about before the spreadsheet that she would maintain, I don't really, you know, add that, or...it's not even related at all to this.
Kind of what this is.
Yeah, those are...
She's already doing it.
I just kinda wrote up...that's my...
Oh, okay, alright, gotcha.
Is it not related? I'm not sure what went...
I think we really had had quite a difference of opinion on...let me back it up by saying, let's not discuss how we get there, but let's discuss what it is that we're looking for. So what is it that you're looking for to be provided with? And then we might be able to figure out, is there another way that this information's already being provided, or...
What I would like?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna know at a high level, extremely high level, all the various major things we're working on as a town, and what we're doing, what the steps are, where, you know, the things I listed is the, you know, McQuan School demolition, the two paving projects that I'm aware of, I think there's been mention of the employee time off system being electronic, just different projects that we're working on, and what's going on with them, what's, you know, at a very high level.
Okay, so if we just kind of like look at, like, auction of town property, I mean, I'm wondering if maybe the way that we could solve this is if there are certain things, and we've had this in the past, there were things that just like nuts, nobody seemed to be able to crack...it was like a cell phone tower, like, every meeting, we were like, "What's going on with the cell phone tower?" Long before Lisa came here, it's been going on for, I don't even know how long. Maybe there's a punch list of things that we, as a board, can agree, hey, these are things, whenever you get an update, can you just make sure you include it in your town administrator report? Like, you probably would organically do it anyway, but they're things that are just like hot-button issues that people ask about all the time. I don't know how else people wanna handle that. I don't wanna...I don't wanna over-engineer it, I don't wanna kill an ant with a cannon, but I wanna try to be responsive to the fact that you want to...you wanna be able to answer people if they are asking you these questions, or maybe just in your mind, you wanna know that we're making progress on things. So I hear where you're coming from, Ed, I'm just not sure how to do that without overburdening Lisa. So, Mr. Weeks, did you have thoughts on that? Um, so, Mr. Weeks, did you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's totally up to you guys, just, that was just my idea.
No, no. Ms., Mrs. Green, any thoughts on that?
I think that we're, I, I believe we are kept up to date on stuff. And if, I think that if, I mean, myself, I go in and talk to Lisa if I have issues. I, I'll go spend a few moments and talk to her, that's, to me, that's a better way. If I had questions on the Burridge Boardwalk, I'd go and ask Lisa. You know what I mean? I wouldn't ask her to keep a running tally of what was going on with one or two or three projects. There's too much going on in that office.
Yeah, I agree, and Ed, on some level, I, I, like, it's a trust but verify situation. Like, on some level, Ms. Green's being paid to do a job. She knows what, she knows what we're expecting her to do, and I think you could ask anytime during the town administrator's report, anytime, one-on-one with her, um, like, hey, what's going on with, shoot her an email, text her, whatever, um, you know, what's going on. Um, and what I'd hate to do is start some process where we have this spreadsheet, and then it's just like, you know what I mean? Like, it's got to be updated, and then if it doesn't get updated, does that really accurately say what she's doing? I know where your mind's going, because I deal with project plans at work all the time, and I do like to put things in little boxes like that, so I, I totally understand where you're coming from. Um.
So, I, okay, I'm not trying.
Um, Mr. George, what do you think?
I'm good.
You, okay, yeah, right, well, that summarizes that, okay.
We did talk about using her administrator report to, for the weeks that you don't meet, to send one out still, and just to kind of touch base on what's happening during the week and update as you go along.
Just bullets, like, don't kill yourself with verbose, you know, like, you know.
I'm not saying verbose, that's, I don't think.
And even like, and I wouldn't even say, don't do it just for the sake of doing it, like, just if there's something that you think we need to know before the next time we meet, and you probably do this anyway, like FYI, we just received the One Stop Grant, or FYI, you know, we're paving fifty, whatever it is, you know? Um, I don't know. Anybody have anything else on that? Okay, I feel like we keep circling the drain on the same discussion, but I, maybe it's just me. Um, okay, um, so that brings us to committee updates. Anybody have any wild desire to update us on anything burning and critical right now? Okay, um, I did some, kind of like, um.
Oh, you know what, uh, maybe, maybe. This is more of a request for the next select board meeting. But, um, the, the High Street Park Committee wants to do a presentation, just like a short, quick one.
We would love it, we would love it.
I keep me, forgetting to ask.
We would love it, can you, um, can you put a placeholder on our next agenda?
And Lisa and Tony and Eric have been awesome, they've been coming to last to try to give us good ideas and get us on the right path, because the town's been waiting for so long for some type of traction, some type of.
So you guys are getting on track and?
We are, we have, and Lisa's come with some great ideas about different funding options and things like that, but they want to do a quick presentation, nothing crazy.
We would love it, we would absolutely love it. Um, and, um, okay, so that brings us to approve open session minutes from July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Ms. Green, over to you, town administrator's report.
All right, uh, yes, Madam Chair, is Chair, members of the board. Um, so just, um, circling back around with, with some, some projects. Uh, master plan update, uh, that process has begun. Uh, there was a meeting with O. Colony Planning Council on Monday, August fourteenth. Um, as, I don't know if you remember, the town was awarded a grant of sixty thousand dollars. Um, again, that application was completed and filed by the town planner, Tony De Freyus, um, through, and it was submitted through the Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Grant Program. So, um, it's going to be a lengthy process to update the master plan, but the process has begun. Um, we will see, um, there will, there will be, uh, social media posts, uh, there will be meetings and interviews with, again, department heads and employees. Um, so there, there's going to be a long process through this, but we had the beginning meeting for this.
And will, um, dare I say, a member of the select board be part, or the entire select board be part of the master plan?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It was just, like I said, it was just a, a, an initial, um, you know, hi, OCPC, we're going to be helping you with the master plan, we've got this grant, and so more formalities and details are to come.
And what's our ETA on that?
I, I don't have an ETA quite yet, but I will work on getting that, um, for you. Um, and second, uh, again, circling around with, for another grant, uh, the engineering work, um, is about to begin on the pedestrian improvements at the Hanson commuter rail station. Again, that was another grant, the, the town was awarded of ninety thousand dollars. Again, the application was completed by Tony De Freyus and submitted through the Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Program. Um, we had Verdantis that did a, oh my goodness.
Conceptual?
No, they did a, um.
Oh, oh, they did the drone thing?
The drone, so they, they did a drone survey of that area, um, to get a really good idea of the pedestrian crossing in, in the whole area. So they are now beginning the, um, engineering and design program on that. So, um, again, that, that was a ninety thousand dollar grant that we received. Um, so that is now up and going, running. I mean, it has been going, they've been doing some different investigations, but the drone was like the last part of it. Um, also too, very excited on this, uh, the, the Mass DOT tip program, which is the transportation improvement project, which incorporates the McQuann Row, Street. Um, there was a little bump in the road that had to do with a, um, a water pipe that's underneath the roadway. Um, a subsurface utility engineering evaluation is required because of where the pipe is located. The pipe, um, carries water to Abington Rockland. Uh, they were not interested in joining the town with having this evaluation done, uh, which left the town wondering, where are we going to come up with a hundred thousand dollars? Uh, fortunately, our legislative partners, Josh Cutler's office and Senator Michael Brady's office stepped in, and they put in it for an earmark of a hundred thousand dollars, and the governor just signed that, um, that budget, including a hundred thousand. So we now have been awarded a hundred thousand dollars to move forward with this subu- subsurface utility engineering.
And then that will cover the cost of that, and then if they get the green light on that, then we can move forward with that. How, how many million dollars worth of project is that?
Thirteen million is the approximate, um, uh, cost of this project that the state, the, the town has a grant to cover.
Awesome.
Um, so that was huge, so a very big thank you to our legislative partners for helping us obtain this money. Um, and McQuann Elementary School, uh, as you remember, the board deemed a number of items as surplus. Um, we, we used a company and placed the items on auction. Uh, we ran the auction for about three weeks, and we did take in about two thousand three hundred dollars. Um, and, uh, you know, people bought a lot of the items in the school, which saves us from having to, to, um, pay to have it removed and, and disposed of properly. Um, so that is, um, that's a very good thing, and Charlie Baker has been managing the process with meeting the buyers there, collecting the payment, turning in the receipts, um, providing the turnovers to our office, and making sure that people take away only what they purchased. So he's been very active with that. Um, the asbestos abatement does continue. Um, there was a, there was a, um, development with the flooring in the school where, when they started to remove the tile, the material underneath the tile, directly underneath, is made of a tar-like substance. So what happens is when the machine, um, basically drills it up and it's sucked into the machine, the heat of the machine melts the tar, and it creates a very sticky substance, and it seizes up the machine. Now, this could not have been anticipated dur- during the asbestos pre-demolition survey. Basically, what they do is they, uh, drill down in, they pull it up, they test it for asbestos. They don't test the material, that's accounted. So, uh, there was a change order that needed to be, um, submitted to the town because they need a different pro- to do a different process to, to take up this material, and they need different machines.
How much was that?
Uh, fifty-six thousand dollars.
Is that still within the amount?
We're still under the million dollars.
Okay, all right.
Um, but it's interesting, with learning about this type of substance, it's not so- something that's commonly used. Um, and the only other air, um, buildings that are known to have this type of substance is the MIT buildings, um, in another elementary school. So, uh, I don't know why they used it, but, uh, that is continuing. Um, and hopefully by mid-September, they will start the process of actually demolishing, demolishing the bi- the building, um, unless they're, they're held up by some other delays, but so far, so good. Um, and also too, in a prior meeting, we had talked about the net metering solar, um, agreements that the town entered into back in twenty-eighteen, um, that have not been looked at since. So I did get copies of all the agreements, and we talked about a consultant coming in and helping us decipher whether the agreements are still a benefit to the town, whether we are being credited properly through these net metering agreements. Um, I did get a proposal from Beth Greenblatt, and she's the principal of Beacon Integrated Solutions. She's extremely knowledgeable on energy, national grid, electricity, solar. Um, I have worked with her before on net metering agreements, she's very, very knowledgeable. She did submit a, a proposal to help us go through the agreements, there's three agreements, and to help us circle back with all the national grid accounts that are supposed to be, um, credited net metering, to make sure the town has been credited through all these years, the way they're supposed to.
Is she the only one who responded? Because I really hate, like, when we don't have competition. Because I, I always feel like we're not maybe getting the lowest price we could.
Well, she's the one I reached out to because I know her experience and her knowledge is top-notch on this. I mean, I am happy to reach out to other companies to see what they, what they offer.
This wasn't something we have to RFP, right, under?
No, it's under ten thousand, so we do not need to. Um, so we do have that, and her, her, um, proposal for basically go- helping us go through all the accounts, and there's several national grid accounts in, through all the years, is, is not to exceed six thousand. Um, and we can use our per fees to cover that cost. Um, and also too, I want to just address the roadwork on Route twenty-seven, Main Street. Uh, there's been some, um, reports to us that the sto- the storm grates are in there backwards, they're not fitting properly. We are aware of that, um, the proper, the, the correct grades are on back order, the state is waiting for them to come in, but in the meantime, they did put these grates in to have something in there. Um, from what I understand, the highway director does say that they've been putting barrels over some of the grates that are higher. Um, but unfortunately, for some reason, some people are, are moving the barrels, and we're not sure why. So if you see a barrel over a storm grate, please don't remove it. So we are for safety.
I understand these grates are put in parallel to the road, so a bicyclist is going to go over that grate, get stuck, and flung off the side of its bike.
That sounds horrific.
It's, it, I don't understand for the life of me why anybody did that in the first place. Because that, that's been known for decades.
We have gotten some, um.
So.
Pretty negative feedback about, um, some of the work that's being, the quality of the work that's being done. I am not an expert by any stretch of the imagination on highways, tar, anything of that sort. But just to, uh, the uneducated person driving down that road, I can see that there's been some lack of attention to detail in curbing, um, in the wa- in, in the transitions to roads, in the transitions to driveways. I don't know what those technical terms are, but I can tell you, I felt it when I went onto Elm Street, um, from that road. Um, so I, um, I hope that you will work with Mr. Schaub, and that we will be giving feedback to the state and to their contractor. Um, I understand that those are funds that we're getting from the state, but that doesn't mean we just need to take whatever we're handed. Uh, we're ultimately going to own these roads up, after they pack up and they go back, go on to the next project. Hanson's going to own whatever legacy they leave behind, and I want to make sure that we're holding them accountable for doing the job they're supposed to do.
Yes, absolutely, yep. Jameson has been, been on them about a number of different things with that. Um, let's see.
Did you have something, Ed?
No.
Okay, all right.
Um, so every, you all got a copy of our very first Hanson Happenings newsletter that is being released both internal and external. So this is going to be released through our, um, all our social media to the residents in, in internal. Uh, we had two prior newsletters that were only internal, uh, but this is our first one. And actually, when I was interviewed for the position back in April of twenty-one, I had mentioned, um, and stated that I wa- I wanted to start a newsletter.
Yes.
Um, yes, it, it has taken two years, but here it is.
We've had a few things in between, so.
Yeah, we've had some things in between, but, um, with the help of Capital Strategic Solutions, here's our newsletter. Um, and I, I, it, it's great the way that, that we all put together and everybody, um, submits stories and updates and things like that, so, uh, we do like showcasing it, um, our employees, um, talking about what the work the different departments are doing, um, and just putting other little things in there that would be of interest to the, uh, residents.
I love it. Good work.
So to, you know, just also to, um, circle around about the work in the office, um, we are a member of the Southeastern Regional Services Group, which is a collaborative group that does, um, procurement in, in a collaborative form um, with, with a lot of the Southeastern Regional, um, towns. So I had received seven contracts today to review that range anywhere from, um, WB Mason Products, Supplies, Paper. Um, this also includes asphalt for highway, concrete, um, gravel, sand, um, a number of different supplies and services. Um, so that was seven contracts that I needed to review today and sign, and then we needed to get them mailed back to the different companies, um, to enter into the contract to get these prices. It also included gas, gasoline and diesel as well.
So that, that sort of, like, because of the scales of economy, gives us bargaining power?
Absolutely, yes.
I love it, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, saves us money across the board. So, um, you know, that's, that's all, those are water pages to, to look through and sign. Um, also, I join a weekly meeting, um, that we now have with the fire chief, deputy fire chief, our building inspector and health inspector, just to collaborate on code, health, and safety enforcement around the town. Um, so that's something that we're going to continue on, it's a very productive meeting. Um, and, uh, it's, it's going to help all of the town officials, uh, really, really enforce code on the town. Um, also, I, the last couple of years, I spent a great deal of time, time working on personnel, union, procurement, legal matters, insurance, records requests and complaints, um, to respond to all, to make sure all deadlines are filed for each of that. Um, and I also had a pond management meeting with our conservation agent, uh, where he educated me on all our ponds in the town of Hanson and provided direction as far as pond management. Um, so he did provide me with some companies, um, and suggested that we start with conducting a study of the health of our ponds, um, and then, uh, look for companies to help us with pond management. So we may have to increase our line item, our budget item for pond management, uh, but at least it's a start in that direction. Um, and last but not least, the interviews for the administrative position in the board of, uh, the select board's office and town administrator are going to be happening this week. We've got a few candidates that we're going to interview for the position, and hopefully we'll find the right fit and the right candidate. If not, we will continue to search until we get the right person. Uh, but that is on the way, and hopefully by mid-September, we'll have, um, the third person in our office.
So, um, I, is your plan to vet and down, select a couple of people and then bring them to the board to? Okay, all right.
Yes, yes, as, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, great.
And that completes my town administrator report for today.
Okay, um, then I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, I, we're supposed to go into wage and personnel at eight, which we can't do before eight, so.
We can take a biology break.
We can do that, um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn, um.
So moved.
Okay.
We're not going to executive session?
Um, no, we're not, well, no, we were, we're supposed to, we're supposed to do wage and personnel at eight.
Right.
Do you think that we could do executive session in the ten minutes?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, great, thank you, Mr. Weeks, then. I'm sorry, sorry, your biology will have to be put on hold.
Okay, I'll have to wait ten minutes.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will reopen in open session to, um, to wage and personnel. Um, we are going into executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares, building litigation discussions. Um, executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes, July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, and August first, twenty-twenty-three. I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Uh, roll call vote, Mr. George?
Aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourning to executive session.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at, uh, it's supposed to be at eight o'clock, but we're running a little bit behind due to some other meetings, so we're going to call the meeting to order at eight eleven for the wage and personnel, um, Tuesday, August fifteenth, Select Board Meeting Room. We're going to jump right into new business, where we're going to vote to remove from personnel classification and compensation by law the positions of reference librarian, youth services librarian, and youth services associate. Uh, Lisa, would you mind standing for that, please?
Yeah, so those positions, um, recently.
Yeah, so those positions recently were put into the union, so we need to remove them from the classification by law, because prior to coming into the union, they were wage classification.
So moved.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor to remove. We have a second, all those in favor?
Hi. I have to ask one question, though. This is not to do with that.
Okay.
It's a little bit different, but we had talked about, and this has to do with segue into the next thing with Tony. The K, the Grant Writer Procurement Administrator, is still there. Is that going to stay there?
We can, we can keep it there for future, because there's other positions that are still there that we don't have, that we're not filling.
Okay, I just wanted, because I saw, you know, thinking about the salary, et cetera, and we weren't going to fund that line item.
Right, so maybe someday, things might change in our town planner, you know, we have to look at that, so we might not want to remove that position.
Point of education for me.
No, it's an important one, too.
I think you could go either way on it. You could remove it because we said we were going to use some of that to fund Tony's new salary, or you could leave it there with us agreeing we're not going to fill that position.
It seems like we should have something at least to note that it's not filled, like an asterisk or something to say, you know, we've got this position, but it's not filled, or won't be filled.
Yeah, I mean, so just because we have the position here does not mean that we have to fill it, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
It just means that we have a job description, we have a line item for it, and we have a range for it, if we were to ever want to fill that.
Exactly.
All it is, this is really just a list of things that we have, so we know that they exist.
Some of it's just aspirational, I mean, I love her.
Right. Because if we do remove it, we'd have to create a job description, put it back on, get it allocated to town meeting now, which is all here in one spot. Number two, review and discuss the adoption of updated Town Planner job description. So, that should be in the pack, it's here. And Lisa, if you want to just kind of run through some highlights, that'd be great, otherwise I want to entertain a motion to accept it.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So, on that, on that job description, basically, no additional duties were added. If you, most of the, most of the addition, basically, Tony De Freyus has been writing grants, managing the grant funds, the projects. He's been completing progress reports and closeout reports for grants. You'll see that on the third page, or the second page, or maybe the third page.
Under essential functions?
Is that the second page or what?
No, so actually, yeah, under essential functions, you'll find that information towards, to the bottom, and actually, on the next page of the essential function, you'll see that seeks grant programs for various planning, community development, and different structure programs, projects. He reviews and completes the grant applications, supervises grant-funded projects, prepares and files the grant progress reports and the closeout documents. Also, you'll see that he is going to be working with the strategic planning goals. He serves as the lead to work to fulfill the legislative requirements of the MBTA multi-family zoning laws, which towns are required to be compliant with. And fortunately, because of Tony's work on this, we are compliant with this, which opens up eligibility for many grants. He also is going to be a lead working with the High Street Park Committee on the High Street Park Project. He's also going to be serving as a town of Hanson representative and working with the Mass DOT and engineers on the $13 million McQuann Street Tip Program. He's been really instrumental with us with that, as well as adding his feedback to, as far as engineering of that project. So, he, this outlines, he's already been doing this, but this solidifies and reflects that he is doing this additional work.
Fantastic. And has this been approved already by, and seen by the planning board?
Yes, it has. It's been, it's been seen by the planning board, and they did approve that job description last evening.
Okay, and has Tony seen this, and has he agreed to all this?
Yes, he has.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
So moved, second.
All right, I've got a motion, second. All those in favor? All right, 5-0. And then, number three, discuss and vote to approve the warrant articles. Now, as a select board, we already kind of placed this, so we just have to go through it. I'm assuming we're going through the highlighted ones that are highlighted in blue on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, Ed, you might as well go, because you already brought it up.
I just had an issue with this, a question about the C, about why the $75,000 is the low end. It seems, I don't know that we, I think we might want to raise it above the $51,000, but I'm not sure why we want to pigeonhole ourselves into a $5,000 range.
Because you might hire somebody at $70,000, but you can't if the range is 75, starting with, so, does it make sense as a board, I mean, do you see us keeping, even if we're not going to find someone, just you see as an example, if we're not going to find someone at 51.7, doesn't it make sense to just keep it at 51.7 and just raise the high end?
Yes, yes.
So, I'm thinking for C, if we just keep the low end to what the previous low end was and raise the high end to what you're suggesting?
That makes more sense.
And do the same thing for G?
So, on C, you want to keep 51.7, and then, and then, 51.7 to 80?
Yes.
Okay.
And then for G, keep it from 45,000 to 105.
So, for G, 45?
And is J now?
Okay.
J? Uh, no.
We had that in there from before, okay.
Wait a minute, on G, we keep it, we're saying 45 to 105, that's a $60,000 swing.
What do you mean?
That is, that, that...
You want to raise it higher? I just don't think that...
No, I think maybe like 70 to 105 or something. We're not going to get somebody for 45.
You're not going to get anybody for 45,000.
I'm good with 70.
70, so make it 70.
70.
All right.
And then, what else? Is there anything else that people can see?
So, the blue is the only changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like an R, that's exactly what you did. You kept it, the low end is 25 to 4200.
Yep. And everything's in line with minimum wage increases, right? Nothing that we need to...
What is minimum wage?
What is minimum wage now?
What is it?
$42?
15?
Yeah.
Because of Reddit minimum wage, a lot of it is not. Or speech director.
Okay. So, is there anything else that anybody can see? And then...
Well, can we just talk briefly, circle back to the Building Inspector? Do we really want to cap it at 80? You know, it, I mean, right now, it might not matter because we've got somebody in that job, but I think if we're going to go in and make a change, we should be realistic and maybe put it, like, do like 75,000 to 90,000 or something, like, that's more realistic of what we're going to hire somebody for.
Well, do we know what Building Inspector's making?
We have to go with a market analysis, I don't want to throw an arbitrary number.
No, I have looked at it, but I mean, that's just my armchair analysis, but Lisa, have we done any reconnaissance on the Building Inspector salary, what the average salary? That just seems like, is 80,000 really the max that we would pay for somebody to do that job?
Well, we have a section classification that's being done, and they are interviewing all the department heads, and they're doing the surveys. So, we will have, when they're done with this, we will have survey, salary surveys for all the department heads in town hall.
All right, and which point, I guess we could always revisit it.
Yeah, we should circle back to that.
Yeah.
But, you know, good point, it's just, I'm glad we're doing the research on it. All right, so as a select board, we already kind of, we already placed this, so we'll accept a motion to accept this article as amended.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Did you guys get the amendment?
I think they're working on it in real time.
Yeah, and there is going to be an additional amendment to this that had changed, and it has to do with, on the part-time, I don't know, on the, let's see. So, under Section 11C, part-time positions, the Select Board Administrative Assistant position was located under that section. And what we're doing is, we're, it's being moved to Section 11B, Administrative and/or Full-Time Positions, so that we, so that we can increase the hours above 15, but not go over the 19.5.
Okay.
So, that gives us that flexibility to do that, increase the hours if we see the need. Right now, we are having difficulty with that position. People have said all 15 hours isn't enough, so we'll see what these candidates have to say with it, but that's how we are correcting that, to allow us to go above the 15 hours.
Okay. And has that already been reflected in the one that we had as a select board, already approved?
It's, it's not reflected in this one.
Okay, so that's coming.
I think what happened was Kate sent it just to me, and she didn't include Lynn on it.
Well, did you say that you were taking it from C to B?
Yes.
It's in B right now, Executive Assistant?
No, no, no.
No, Section B, it is straight.
Oh, all right, okay, all right.
Yes, it's going to be moved to that section there.
All right.
Okay. So, we're going to have to...
Oh, I see, yeah.
We'll have to address that in the future, okay?
Or can we accept it?
We could accept it now. Is it ready to, can we accept that change contingent upon Town Council being, you know, being streamlined?
Yes, so what we have to do is, we just need to move it from Section C to Section B, so it will be line M.
So...
Which, which line is it now?
Right now, it is line double F.
All right, so I make a motion that we accept this article with the following changes. The Town Planner under Section 11A-G, effective 10/2/23, will be 70,000 to 105,000, and we will be moving FF from Section 11C, Part-Time Positions, to Section 11B, under Administrative and/or Full-Time, and it will be relettered as M.
Yes.
And I, I don't think, did you get the C?
I didn't do anything to that one, because she was going to be looking at the salaries, and we just were like, okay, get back to us on that.
We're just, we're keeping this at 51.7?
Oh, okay, and then we will have a range of 51.7 to 80,000, effective 10/2/23, for Section 11A-C, Inspector of Buildings.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, did you get all that, Lynn?
I guess we'll do that and get them back.
Perfect. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Both, all right, 5-0. And then, lastly, approve meeting minutes for June 27, 2023.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, perfect. And then, lastly, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, we adjourned.